Welcome everyone. Welcome to our third Moose Lake School Board Candidate Forum sponsored by the Moose Lake PTA. I'm Sarah Thiessen, President of the PTA. I would like to take a minute to thank the candidates for attending and for the press for covering this event. I also want to thank my co-chairs Lisa Rialoma and Billy Joe Steen. They have set such a high standard of excellence and professionalism that it makes me very proud to be a part of this PTA. We will be starting with a State of the School update by Superintendent Bob Indahar and Adam Camp will be our moderator this evening. Thank you both for taking the time to be here. We will be posing pre-written questions to the candidates. If time allows, we will take questions from the audience at the end. Jessica and Honey have pens and papers for you to write your questions down. Once you've written your questions down, please hand them to Honey and Jessica and they will bring them up to the stage. I'd like to ask Bob Indahar to please come up.
Thank you and thank all of you for coming tonight. I was asked to give a State of the School speech and I have never done that in my life. So this will be kind of interesting. I'm going to kind of wing it, but I'll give you some of the highlights or some of the main things I think you should know about Moose Lake schools. One of the things I thought we should start with is our finances. And I got to tell you, besides the fact I'm brand new at this job and school finance is a very difficult subject, throw on top of that that the state decided that they're only going to pay us 64% of what we thought we were going to get and they said they're going to give us the 30-whatever percent sometime later. That kind of confused things a little bit. And then throw a flood on top of it where we had to expend a lot of money to get this school back in shape and then try to figure out where are we sitting? I can tell you a couple of things that are factual and then I'm going to have to be a little general on finances for right now. We had planned this year, the school board had planned that they were going to spend down the budget a little bit by about $100,000. They had hired some extra teachers to keep class sizes down and they knew that they would be overspending the budget by about $100,000. As of June 30th, we actually are down about $200,000. But that's not too bad because about $95,000 of those dollars are from the flood and we do expect to get reimbursed from that. So our budget is pretty much on track as far as we can see up to June 30th. One of the things I do want to talk about is it's kind of an issue in our school is that we've had a declining population here for some time now. We're down about 37 students this year. That's a big deal. When we look into the reasons for this, one of them is the flood. The state realizes that anytime a school goes through a natural disaster, that that school loses students. And so we're going to get some extra money from the state because we went through a natural disaster. But probably the bigger reason is we just simply have less kids to choose from in Moose Lake than we did 10 years ago. And if we look at the numbers, we probably have about 100 less kids to choose from than we had 10 years ago. The good news is that we still are a popular school in the area. We attract more students than go. And so our open enrollment definitely helps us. Another good point is that the school board has been very prudent with the money. We did have a cash reserve. We did have good cash flow up until about the point when the flood occurred. I can tell you that the summer was tough because when you are promised a certain amount of money and they only pay you 64% of that and say, you know, make do with that until we can find money to give you, that's a little tough. And then when we had all that extra fixing up to do here, we were having cash flow problems. But I can also tell you that majority of the schools are borrowing money at this point in time and that's exactly what we are doing as well. Speaking of the flood, the final cost, as I've reported a couple of times, is going to be around $850,000. I'm in the final stages of working with FEMA. We haven't got any money back from them, but it's very encouraging. It's sounded like most of the things that we've put in for will be paid for. You know, a positive thing, as we've said before, is that we actually were able to open on time. It was kind of questionable early on, but thanks to many people who are in this room who helped volunteer their time to make sure that the damage was as minimal as it could be, we were able to open on time. Our biggest challenge to this date was actually the library. We were struggling getting the library open on time. And if you get a chance, look at the library right now. It does not look the same as it did before. I think you'll be impressed with what we did. It's a little bit, it's got some soft furniture in, I think, you know, take a look. I'll leave it at that. Want to talk a little bit about the staff. This year we had many new teachers. We had a new psychologist, a new EBD teacher, a new art teacher, ECSE teacher, a new counselor, a new DCD teacher, a new industrial tech teacher. We had a new high school principal and you had a new superintendent. So there were some changes that happened this year. We also had a situation where every teacher got an iPad to use. And so I think that that's a positive thing. The teachers have been using this in a variety of ways that are unique and interesting. It's fun to go into the classrooms to see what they're doing. Every room has an interactive smartboard. You know, in Moose Lake, we typically are one of the top school districts in the area for test scores. And this year we did very well. We had one class that did not do as well, but I can tell you that they are taking it very seriously and we're looking for, they're doing an intensive improvement program in that grade. Also, our ACT scores are something that I wanted to talk about because this year we probably had, or last year, we probably had one of the better years that we've ever had for ACTs. And so that was one of the goals for the high school was to get the ACT scores up. And I think they did a good job with that. One of the things that I forgot to mention on finances was last year we did pass a $450 per student levy. That was huge. I can't tell you where we would be right now if that did not pass. And so thanks to all of you who helped pass that. And I don't know if you guys picked up on that, but we were one of the few schools, and I don't want to give a number, but I think there was only a couple of schools in the state that passed a levy that was more than what it was before, more than just the renewal number. We feel good about that. We feel like the community supports the school. I want to talk a little bit about sports because we're also known for sports. Of course, the football team is going on and Saturday is another big game for us. I don't know if any of you went to the volleyball games this year, but you could tell that the girls were improving. And the cross-country team has been kind of revamped. We have all young students on the cross-country team. Some of the things that I've been spending a lot of my time with lately are things that are very exciting. The land. Some of you have heard, I know the papers have written a little bit about it, but there is, we've been trying to figure out what to do with the land on Highway 10. We know we want to build a building eventually, but we know that the land along Highway 73, we'd like to have some commercial developer come in and help us with that. And we've always been stuck there. We've been stuck because we don't have the money to build the infrastructure and, you know, we're trying to work it out with the city, but they really don't have the money to buy it for what we'd like to sell it for. And we've always had this game going on. However, now we may have a developer who has enough money that would do the things that we want done up there. And so we're looking at selling that right now. So that's been kind of exciting. Also, the family center is another thing that we're looking at. The family center, actually, we are looking at trying to sell the family center or we're trying to figure out what to do with the family center because right now we don't have any educational services in there. And so we're not really in the business of being landlords, but at this point, we actually make money with the family center. But then again, if we're not using it for educational purposes, what do we do with it? And so we're looking at that. Lot of talk about a new building. We had a meeting with a general contractor tonight just to see where are we going to go with this. So there's another big issue that we're going to talk about. And then also that we're looking at expanding what we do with childcare here. That's an issue maybe that we're thinking that, you know, maybe that's a service that we could provide the community or be more comprehensive with that. So those are some of the issues that I've been dealing with lately and those are some of the issues that the school board will be dealing with coming up here. Overall, it just seems to me like there's a good atmosphere in the school. There are a lot of exciting decisions that will be made this year that could have a big impact on our community as well as our school. I just wanted to say good luck to the candidates. It's an important job that you're vying for and thank you all for being here tonight.
Hello, everyone. As Sarah said, I am Adam Camp. I'm your moderator. And before I go on further, there might be some confusion because my name's also on the ballot for school board, as some of you may have noticed. I want to assure you that I am not running and that's why they let me up here. I suppose, you know, when one door closes, another door opens and that's why I have the privilege of being up here today. But right after the ballot was finalized, I received a job offer that meant that I could no longer take the time for this position that it deserves. Thankfully, we have some wonderful candidates that'll be with us here today. And now I would like to invite them on the stage with Mr. Jungers. I might have the name mispronounced. Could you introduce us? I just have the one remote. Okay.
Good evening. I am Jamie Jungers. I am a current school board member and a lifelong resident of Moose Lake.
I'm Byron Custer. I'm a teacher at the Challenge Incarceration Program down in Willow River and I've lived in this area for about 20 years.
Hi, I'm Kristy Skelton Weisert. I was born and raised in Moose Lake. I'm currently the Disaster Case Manager for Lutheran Social Services and I've been on the school board for finishing up my second term.
Good evening. I'm Scott Benoit. I'm also a lifelong Moose Lake resident and a former alumnus of Moose Lake School and looking forward to being here.
All right. Thank you all. So we're going to start with the questions. Each candidate gets two minutes to answer the following four questions. We will be timed and you'll be warned when you have 15 seconds left. We'll start the first question with Mr. Jungers. And the first question is, what is your vision of the role technology should play in our
Being that this is 2012 and we are in a technological age, obviously, we need to keep up with the times. It's of utmost importance that the school board through budgetary, the budget process, to keep up with the, not only, well, with all of the hardware that it costs to keep things going. We recently went out for actually a $300,000 loan in order to rewire this entire school so that we could have wireless communications with, as Bob mentioned before, the iPads that teachers have. It's been just exciting to see the things that are going on and to hear the feedback from the teachers and the students on that. It's quite an accomplishment. We also, when we put that in there, just so everybody knows, it is something that could be easily taken out and put it into another building if we do new construction. That will be one thing that can come out of this building into the other one to save
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the PTA for putting on this event. Thank you, Andy, for moderating and for all of you for showing up. The role of technology, I think, opens up a lot of exciting possibilities, sometimes scary, but very exciting as well. I think it's great that the Moose Lake Schools has purchased the smartboards for all the classrooms. I think it's great that they've provided iPads to the teachers so that the teachers can get used to them and find ways that they could use iPads in the classroom. I've heard of, I mean, the possibilities are just so incredible of what can be done. I've been hearing about flipped classrooms. I think it's been used more at the secondary level and possibly, or in colleges. And what a flipped classroom means is in the old days, they used to, the instructor would be in front of the class and giving a lecture, giving a presentation on something and then at the end of the class, the instructor would give the kids homework. Well, a flipped classroom is where the lecture format is pre-recorded and they can go on their iPad and listen to it at home. And then when they come back to school, that's when they're doing the worksheets, doing the homework, doing the lab experiments. The teacher can move around and talk to the students and that sort of thing. It's just a whole different concept of how to do school. It's hard for me to imagine all the different ways that technology will change education, but I think it's going to happen. You can see little kids, four years old, and they grab iPads and they're playing games. We've got grandkids. They love to do all kinds of the apps and programs that are educational. They're kind of, you know, doing math where the little fish gobbles up the bubbles and it adds up, you know, it adds up to numbers and it's a way of making learning fun and I think it's inevitable that that's going to be a part of the future of education.
I think technology, obviously, is a wonderful thing and we need to keep up with all the school districts in our state and across the country. I think that we need to be careful and I think there needs to be a balance between technology and also the old-fashioned way of teaching, which is with books and hands-on things, teacher-student contact, all the things that we, our generation, grew up with. So even though it's important and I think we need to keep up and the iPads and the smartboards make teaching easier, we just need to remember that it can be overdone and we have to keep in mind that the old-fashioned way of teaching is also very important for teachers and students as well.
Well, answering fourth, I feel like I'm going to be repeating a lot of things. First off, I'm a millennial. I grew up with technology. The idea for me having a smartphone, a cellphone, is something that I've never known different from. I grew up with the internet and I remember in this very school, doing the first research paper where you use the internet. Scary thing that is a daily part of our life right now. Essentially, 2012, I agree that we need to keep up with the times. It would be excellent if we could become the premier school in a lot of ways with technology. Also, to be careful that what we're getting into is something that's going to last, as well as, like what Kristy said, somehow 20 years ago, everyone still became productive members of society and went on to all kinds of successful jobs. So I want you to look at technology as a tool and not something that you necessarily overspend on just to say we're keeping up with the school down the street. But with that, there's cost savings that you can use with technology. I know a lot of the classroom settings now, you can use your smartphone, the smartboards to read. You don't need to use the paper. There's a lot of examples you can come up with where technology isn't only more efficient, but the long-term savings at some point is going to start paying for itself. So keep up with the times, be careful what you get into and still remember that good teachers are what makes the students of this school successful.
All right. Thank you all. The next question I have, and we'll start with Mr. Custer this time, is what is your vision for the use of the district's land on County Road 10?
Well, Superintendent Indahar just mentioned, there is sort of a plan of pot, or at least there's a lot of possibilities with that land up on the hill. I think after the flood that happened in this past summer, I think it really increases the need to look at the possibility and the pros and cons of possibly building a new school up there. I like, I think that the potential development could really be a boon for this area by selling retail space. I know the ALCO store up there is like, has the third largest sales of all the ALCO stores in this country. And so that's promising to other stores and retail outlets that might want to move in. That would bring some new business. I think that draws in more people. There's possibility of putting a big box store like maybe a Target or a Gander Mountain or something like that that's been talked about in the past. I think it's exciting, the possibilities that exist with that area. And it's really fortunate that the school has the property up there and can do something with it. Now, how it's done and stuff, that needs to be worked out and, but it really is a good thing and it's going to be a very positive new dimension to the Moose Lake area.
Thank you. Hand it to Ray.
I don't think I really have a vision of what we should do or what we need to do with that land. I like the idea of looking at the possibility of selling the strip along Highway 73 there for commercial development and the possibility of having some land reserved for residential if needed. And we have talked in the past about building a school up there and we've tried and it's failed. And we had kind of come to the conclusion as a school board that we would look at just building here on this property. And of course, the flood kind of changed all of that. So now I think we need to be realistic and again, look at building again up on that County 10 property. So it's a wonderful piece of land that we have and we own and I think it's a good possibility and option for a new school to go up there. Now whether or not it's a K through 12, 7 through 12, you know, that depends on the people in the community and how they vote. But I think we're lucky, most school districts don't own a couple hundred acres of land free and clear that they have the option to build on.
Moose Lake School is very fortunate to own hundreds of acres of land. I know over a decade ago, the teachers used it for science classes and right now we're looking at developing land to build a new school. I don't have a vision necessarily either for what needs to happen with that land. I want to do what's going to make sense and what's going to be best for the school district. If that means selling part of the land, developing it, flipping it, with the expression earlier, in order to meet needs of the future community, that's great, but I really believe in forming educated committees that can help evaluate and analyze what needs to be done and then assess that against the goals of your school board. If we're able to build a new school to meet the needs of the community, that's wonderful. At the same time, I think there's needs that are happening in the school district right now that need to come first.
There has never been a time in recent history that the school and the community have been more intertwined when it comes to the history of this town and the future. That land is essential for the future of our town and our community, our school and our businesses. It's time to develop it. We can't leave it vacant anymore. We need to develop that and bring the tax base up and bring more jobs into this town. And from that, it's a natural progression to have some type of building up there on our land. But I have been a big proponent and for those of you who've been at our school board meetings recently, I am passionate about that. It's time that we get our feet out of the mud and really do something. And in fact, we already are in the process of hopefully selling approximately 13 acres of that land to a developer who will bring in businesses to this town, which again, as I said before, it's direly needed and I think we all understand that. As I said before, that hopefully will lead to the infrastructure being placed into that area, including roads and sewer and water, so that in the future, we could have some type of building up there. And Kristy was alluding to that. We just don't know what that is yet. We will be bringing the task force back together like we did before, but to talk about whether we'll have a split campus or to have a full school up there, K through 12. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I am going to ask the next question. We're going to start with Ms. Skelton Weisert and that is, some schools have used creative means to balance budgets in these economic times. What are some options the board should consider to maintain a balanced budget while continuing to provide a quality education for our children?
Ways to keep the budget balanced? Well, I think we've done a really good job so far. Trying to think if we've been creative about that. I think we've just basically done what we've needed to do considering our needs at the time, how much money we have at the time, our projected outlook for the future. We've been really diligent at keeping a reserve in our budget, which is important for disasters, for example, unexpected expenses. You know, I think we've been really prudent with our money, handled it really well. We've been told over and over again that we've been doing a really good job financially compared to most schools in the state. So I think it's just being aware of what our needs are and really just trying to balance everything out. You know, we've had to make some really tough decisions in the past, but in the long run, I think they've all been the right decisions and financially, we're doing, we're doing well right now, even considering what we went through this summer.
Creative means to balance the budget. This is a difficult question in light of the last few years and the financial situation of the school. Throw a flood into there and a declining population of students and I believe the job that has been done to manage the money of the school right now has already been phenomenal. At some point, you can only analyze the budget so many times and cut it down further and further before you're left with trying to meet the basic needs of the school with the staffing and utilities and everything that goes along with it. As far as creative ways to look at finances in the future, I like the ideas of expanding childcare with three or four of some of the largest employers in the area within a half hour of this area. There are so many professionals that could benefit from childcare in the area, especially in a setting with our location and with the professionals in the school. Being so close, I think that'd be something to explore. Something you would not want to explore would be selling any type of school land or school resources in effort to fill a void for a budget. I think those are priceless resources. And to use any of those resources, as stated earlier, there'd have to be a long-term plan in effect to develop that land and really come up with a win-win scenario that if you develop it, what's it going to do for the tax base in the area? What's it going to do for the school long-term? And not be put in a situation where, you know, another 30% was taken out of the budget to make up for that. We're going to do this and sell that and then next year, kind of shrug and hope that we're in a better place. So creatively balancing the budget, be fiscally responsible, meet all the needs that we're already doing right now for the school, while always trying to look outside the box and keep an open mind for the folks doing the job. I'd really like to hear, if lucky, from many of the teachers and the folks from the school with the current resources, what you think could be done or changed within, reasonably within the budget that we're already using. So that's about it.
Well, first, I'd like to recognize the previous board prior to me coming on four years ago. Wow, what a great job they did. A couple of them are not on the board anymore, but kudos to them. They were, it was tough. There was cuts that had to be made at that time. I got lucky. I came on and between those necessary cuts to keep things, keep the budget where it needed to be, between them- where it needed to be, uh, between them and our financial officer, uh, Linda Dollman, uh, they just doing it, they did a fantastic job, and it's continued into these last four years. As Christie said, we do have a lot of, uh, recognition from the state, um, for the way that we handle our budgets and our, our spending. Uh, we, taxes are a necessary thing. I don't like them anymore, and maybe even more than some of you, but I also, uh, realize that at a local level, um, they're, they're needed, and that's what keeps our school going, uh, especially since the state has been, keep, continued to cut, um, their finances towards, uh, for the schools. When we ask for a levy, we really need it. Uh, we don't ask for it, uh, we don't, it's, we take it very seriously. It's not an easy thing to do to ask more money from people, but this is the education of our children. This is your children, this is your grandkids, these are your nephews and your nieces that are all being educated here, and especially at this local level, it's just, uh, a necessary part, and with that comes the budget and the responsibility of maintaining that budget. There are times where you have to spend it down, uh, just to keep things going and keep up with the Joneses, but there's also times where we gotta watch ourselves and, and stay within that budget. Thank you.
Well, first of all, let me just say that I do believe that the school district does need to keep a balanced budget. I consider myself fiscally conservative, um, socially progressive and liberal, but not fiscally conservative. Um, I think we always have to remember it's the taxpayers' money we're spending. At the same time, we have to remember that, uh, schools are investment, and it's an investment into their, our children and grandchildren and into the future. Um, how do we get more money? Well, you asked for some creative ideas, I th- I'll throw out a couple non, not particularly creative ones, but, uh, you know, do everything we can to keep this, to keep the kids we have. Try to, um, get some of the kids out of maybe open enrollment to Barnum or elsewhere to look at coming back to this school, uh, school district. Another one would be talk to legislators, let them know how much the, um, the withholding of school funds is hurting the school district. I imagine a lot of that stuff has already been done. I think, um, to play off of Scott's idea of getting a, uh, childcare, daycare, try to get them used to coming to the school when they're young, so that when they go into kindergarten, it's just natural to go to this school, and then they stay with the school all the way through for their, uh, all the way through to their 12th grade, uh, graduation. As far as, um, other more creative ways, um, just sort of thinking off the top of my head, you know, maybe there's a way to ask some of the, uh, people in the, in the community to consider that when they do their estate planning, that when they create their will and stuff, to, um, donate some money to the, to the school district. Maybe there's a way that they could be honored, um, a plaque or something. There's also, let's see, another idea would be, uh, possibly have a community garden with organic produce being created that could be sold to create some money. Another one, I know there's a website called Kickstart, and you can, uh, put projects out there that you can fund, and, and people will volunteer to donate money to the project. So, just a couple things.
All right, thank you all. Uh, this is, uh, one of the last of the pre-written questions, and then, uh, following that, we'll have questions from the audience, so if you've already written yours down and want to get one of our, uh, helpers' questions now, that would be wonderful. So the last of the question, we'll start this with Mr. Benoit, is, "What makes the Moose Lake School District unique and marketable in your opinion or your experience? And how do we capitalize on that to increase student enrollment?"
How do we make it marketable? Uh, first, the location of Moose Lake, again, as I mentioned, with such large employers in the area, our location, um, our location is a lot of the work for us. We're centralized between these state agencies, the hospital that's recently going through an expansion right now. We're gonna have the employees and hence the families and the kids to come to the school, and again, I, we already have great teachers and a history of excellence in the school. In order to keep it and further expand on that, I think an active and aggressive, um, effort to be made with these larger employers to really get the facts and the information out on this school. Um, the school is where I went through, it served my family, my parents, my grandparents well. I'm grounded, I'm invested in this community, I want to see it be successful, and more than anything, I take great pride in this, and I want to be able to say I'm from Moose Lake, and we're known for excellent academics, excellent extracurricular activities and so on, but really getting these folks and families moving into the area, uh, that information, whether it's tours of the school or test scores, or all, all of our positives that we're known for, and getting that information out, um, working for one of the larger employers in the area, it is a pet peeve of mine when folks choose to live 20 minutes, 45 minutes away, um, when that enrollment could make such a difference with the dire finances going on in the school right now. And if you ask a lot of these people, because I like to push the issue, what are some of the reasons why you do that? They say, "Well, this school, F. R. A. Way is known for this," or "This school's known for that." And I want to be in a, I want to be in a position where I can say, "I'm from Moose Lake School, I'm from this area, and we're known for these five things throughout the state of Minnesota, and we're very proud of that, and you should really consider the local school."
Uh, one of the ways for making it marketable, take a look around you. My folks went to school here and sat in those seats out there. That's how old, and that's how outdated this school has become, and, uh, we have to change that. This is not conducive to what we need for our, uh, theaters and our concerts. This is just, uh, we need something better than this, and that's one of the ways to draw the kids in, is let's start talking about remodeling or building something else that's better for our children and their education. This is a tough area demographically, uh, for, uh, to, to, to attract people, uh, into the area, um, when they can live 45 minutes away and have their shopping malls in their areas. Some of the stats that have come out recently when we've, uh, talked about a new building is it just, nobody's having children here anymore, uh, at least, it's, it's definitely decreased in this area. We need to start attracting those young people and start raising their children here in this wonderful community, uh, this school and the teachers, um, the administration, all the staff. It's, it's a great place to go to school, and the sooner that we begin to sell that, uh, hopefully the sooner we get more people that will move here and stay. Thank you.
All right, how can we get more students to come to this school? It's a great question. Um, I'm gonna agree with, with, with Jamie said, a new building would be a big draw. Um, I think people would really be excited to see the new building and what it offers, and, and it'd be nice to have a building that's on par with some of the other schools in the area. I think another thing that, that makes, um, Moose Lake a great school is the teachers we have here, and if somehow we could get the word out that we really have some tremendous teachers. I'm probably more familiar with the elementary school teachers than the high school ones, but I've seen them do some remarkable work with kids that I thought were ADD and would never be able to be controlled, you know, kept in line or whatever, and I've been through the school and I've seen them marching all the hallway in lines and just, it's remarkable what the teachers do. I think they do a fabulous job. I'm not quite sure how to get the word out, if that's a matter, just bringing more people in, but, um, I think that's, uh, a, a great thing. Also, you know, anything you can do to, we've got some great programs, sports, uh, sports, athletics, uh, anything extracurricular that, that draws people in. You know, I, I really don't care if people live 45 minutes away, but I don't see why they couldn't, uh, like, like Scott was saying, a lot, there's a, a couple of big employers with the MSOP and the prison at Moose Lake and even the one down at Willow River. Um, there's no reason why the people can't live wherever they want to live, but when they come to work, the first thing they do is they drop their kids off to school, and then they go to work, and then when they're done with work, they come and pick their kids up from school and, and go home. So I think if we could make that, uh, very workable viable solution for the people who work in the area, I think that would be a way to draw people in. Um, you know, we're, we're near the freeway, so it's quick access, we've got some, a lot of beauty, we're, you know, the lakes and parks and things, um, try to just, uh, emphasize the positive things that we have in this area.
Um, I agree with Jamie and Byron that a new school would probably make us more marketable, considering that Barnum and Willow both have newer schools than we do, um, and a lot of outside people are looking for that, and a lot of people, local people would prefer a new school, but on the flip side of that, I'm gonna argue that, um, you know, having this school, like Jamie mentioned, his parents sat in this auditorium, you know, my kids went to school here, their parents, me, and, uh, my parents and my grandfather graduated from this, from this school, and he was, um, in the first graduating class, actually, I believe. Um, so, you know, there's, there's some history here, and, um, I think that's important for a lot of people. So both of, you know, neither one is right or wrong, a new school or enjoying an old school. Um, what is constant though, I think, about our school is that, um, like Byron mentioned, we do have some incredibly wonderful teachers, and I think they need to be highlighted. Um, I believe it is on the website, but most people probably don't know if they haven't read it, that a high percentage, I think it's around 75% of our teachers have master's degrees. That's just awesome, that's incredible, and I don't think every school district can say that. They're highly educated, they're highly motivated, um, they care about our students, um, they work well together, um, and I, and I really think that's more important than whether we have an old building, um, or a new building. There's other things that, um, you know, we can emphasize as far as marketing in our school. If we do end up staying here, our location is wonderful, we're right in town, we have the lake next to us, most schools can't say that. If we're out on County 10, you know, we have the school forest. So there's, there's various ways of, um, marketing our school, um, wherever we, we're at, I guess.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to get the questions from the audience. Here they come. For these questions, we're going to make the answers maybe just a little shorter, uh, maybe just one minute each, and we will start with Mr. Jungers. Hand that over. All right. First question is, "Public school has students that range from special needs to gifted and talented. Do you have thoughts about how to meet the wide variety of academic needs so that all children are challenged to the level of their ability?"
This, uh, school is very unique in that we have exactly that. Uh, that's a very good question. We've all talked about, and I'll reiterate, our teachers are, uh, just the tops. They're wonderful when it comes to all these different, um, uh, levels of education. One of the things that we talk about often at school board is, um, for all the children, uh, from, uh, DCD, uh, all the way up to gifted and talented. Um, we have recently, um, we've been talking more about our gifted and talented because we've kind of been leaving them on the wayside in, in some respects. Um, our test scores have been, um, very good as of lately, uh, because of the, the teachers' involvement at all of those levels of, uh, education, uh, for our kids in the school, and, um, and we continue to get better.
Yeah, how do we meet the needs of all the kids? Uh, it's a difficult question. If money was no obstacle, or, or, you know, we had unlimited supply, it'd be pretty easy, but that's not the real world. We have a legal obligation, of course, to help the special ed students, and I'm, I'm really proud that, uh, Moose Lake has a early childhood special ed program, as well as, you know, regular special ed. I guess I'm not so sure what we have for the gifted and talented, and how do we keep them stimulated so that they also are challenged and, and, uh, can reach their full potential? One thing that comes to mind is when I was in, uh, graduate school, I remember taking a class on cooperative learning, and where you draw, um, if you don't group people up by ability levels, you actually, um, have the, uh, groupings where you've got some low achievers or some mid-range and some high achievers, and they work together, and the high achievers can help the lower ones come along, and in the process of doing that, they, they have to, um, there, there's that challenge of working with others and trying how to explain, and when you go through that, trying to explain something, you learn it better yourself. That's one possibility, and of course, having that also helps the, uh, lower, lower achieving students. You know, maybe there's a way of getting, uh, expertise from the local community. We've got a, a hospital here, we've got, um, all kinds of skilled medical people that could, yeah, I don't know, maybe they could provide some extracurricular classes or, or put on a program through community ed and gear some of that stuff for, uh, the high school kids, possibly even elementary kids, or have some people come into the classrooms and, and offer some things.
Um, I think we're doing a good job of, of servicing, um, the special needs kids, especially like Byron mentioned, there are state regulations, laws that we need to follow. Um, and it's amazing the variety of professionals that we have at our school that a lot of parents probably don't even realize, everything from occupational therapist to speech therapist, um, you know, um, paras that work one-on-one with the students that need an, individual attention. I think we're doing an incredible job there. Um, there probably is a little gap in our gifted and talented program. It's a little more difficult to fund that, for one. Um, we do have some gifted and talented, um, monies that we're using in the elementary, um, classes, the upper elementary, and then also, um, the high school students, um, have access to taking college classes, so for those kids that are, uh, more ambitious or higher achieving, they can take college classes during high school.
I think Byron used the comment earlier that if money is no object, we can do all kinds of creative and wonderful things to give the most individualized education for every student ever, and in theory, I would agree with that, but with limited finances in a school, there's tough decisions that have to be made, um, with that. There's the legal obligations for special ed students, uh, individualized plans that get put in place for any student needing assistance or personalized attention with that, and that's great, um, but really giving the support and making sure that I think we have the funding in place right now to keep the teachers that we have, as well as increase the student contact hours, is where I'd want to focus. I think there's many ways to do that. One of the answers on my previous question, um, in the PTA questions, was what's a change you would like to make? And I don't know about a change, but I'd like to fully explore the block scheduling and see if we could offer enough individual, individualized elective that for gifted and talented students that we could, um, make a personalized difference to them, that they're not in such a mainstream, um, uh, population with the students, that we can do something special for them. And other, also a huge advocate of mentorship programs, um, if we do have some gifted folks in the school, which I know that we do, and someone wants to get involved in law or in the medical field or anything, I would like to really develop contacts with employers in the community to make contacts with those kids, and set up again some type of either mentorship program or, uh, program where they can get experience and see if that's something that they want to continue going into, as well as be a career guide for some of these folks. Talking about the support for finances, I hate spending so much time on that, it's just a cruelty that we really have to deal with. The referendum that passed, I understand brought us up to our minimum operating cost right now. No one likes taxes raised, but if referendums again in the future, slightly raised in order to make us a premier school in the area, if that's what it takes, someone else paid in for us, I think we need to take that responsibility and pay in for our students right now.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Custer, is, "Do you support the athletic cooperative with Willow River? Why or why not?"
Yes, I do support the athletic cooperative we have with Willow River. Uh, I think it's good for both schools. I think sharing services like that is, is, is good. I think you can offer more athletic, um, opportunities by sharing between two schools than having two small schools trying to do it on their own. So both from a financial standpoint, as well as what's good for the kids, um, I, I think is great.
Um, I also support the cooperative. Um, we have looked at that extensively in the last year or two, um, at our school board meetings, and, um, from what we've discovered, there is actually huge cost savings, um, to cooperating with, with Willow, with sports. Um, so that's a huge reason, but, um, to piggyback on what Byron said, it, it's also a way to connect our kids. There's only a few miles that, um, are in between us and Willow. You know, the kids are friends in, while they're playing sports and, and when they're not playing sports together, so I think it's, it's just a good opportunity for the kids to, um, have more friends and more connections, um, and play sports together.
I also support the cooperative. Whenever you can bring two small schools together, um, in retrospect, and, um, build some relationships with one another, and especially when about nine miles separate you, it's just too small of an area, um, to not bridge those of an area to not bridge those contacts and have those relationships. With that, again, cost savings, anytime you can combine any sport or any activity, I like to explore that in more ways than just athletics with the school whenever we can. I do think there's a flip side of that, that with declining enrollment, tough decisions at times need to be made, and I know there's already been actions taken where the bus route, for example, is not in place anymore, and cost savings that had to happen, I think those are necessary when you don't have a choice. However, with the declining enrollment, if a time comes that we're simply not getting students from the other schools, I do think that Moose Lake School needs to look at seriously what's best for Moose Lake School and have those hard discussions.
This is a very interesting question for me because I do support the cooperative as it is now, but I, I don't, I'm not shy to talk about the fact that we are the only cooperative in the entire state of Minnesota who has every single sport together with the school that they're in the cooperative with. I think we're doing a disservice at times when it comes to numbers from either school that we continue in a sport that the other school does not contribute kids to that sport, and because of that, with the class structure with single A, double A, and triple A, our kids, I think, are placed at a big disadvantage because of the population of the other school that's not supplying those children or those kids to that sport. I, I agree with Scott, too. This is fine for now, but I think when it comes time to start talking about our own school, our own community, it's time to take care of ourselves and do what's right for the kids that are living here, because this is Moose Lake High School, and that's what we're here for. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next question, in this time of open enrollment, what kind of ideas do you have to attract and retain students?
Well, unfortunately, this year, I think we lost a few students just due to the flood, and I don't, I don't think our school is losing any more than any other school, and we are gaining more than we're losing. I think we need to, I think we need to figure out why, I think Byron alluded, Byron alluded to that earlier, we need to find out the reasons why kids are leaving and, you know, why they're going either north or south, or, or taking online classes, and look at individual reasons, and then see if we can work with those families to try and get them back into our school, and, and whatever that may be. I think that bullying has been an issue, not just in our school, but probably in every school district in the country. I think it's something we need to address. If it's, if it's a reason why a student is leaving, then I think that, that issue needs to be resolved with, with individual families. You know, we have, we have a good school, everybody's competing with everybody these days with open enrollment. You know, I don't know how much we should get into that type of competition, I think we should just be confident in ourselves. I think we should highlight our, our assets and our teachers, and then let families make, you know, their decisions and, and go from there.
How to bring more students in? I think everyone has a right to their own to choose where they live, however, if we're talking student for student and dollar for dollar with the funding that comes in, the school needs students to survive. With that, there's very tactical and strategic ways you can do that. I feel like I alluded to it earlier, but with major employers in the area, and to steal part of Byron's answer earlier, there's no reason many families couldn't be creative and draft their kids up at the school boosting our enrollment dramatically. With that, I am a major fan of the referendum, and I'd like to do an extensive campaign to educate the public on how many additional funds, let's, let's pick a number, do we need, so that the teachers, the community, the students feel that this is going to be a premier place of education in the surrounding half-hour area? And to me, what that means is, do we offer the most electives? If not most, the most meaningful? Being a former alumnus with sports and academics here, you know, I'm very proud to see the football team go to state every year, and I'm very proud of those folks, but I'd also like to be somewhere in the state where they say you're known for having that educational program be the same level going throughout the school. And if that took a number, an additional number of funds passed with the referendum to meet those needs, to offer those electives, and again, I alluded to block scheduling earlier, depending on what a real analysis would be of that, and if we can increase student contact hours to the degree that we can sell that as something that no other school in the median area has, I think there's a lot of little things here where we can put our best foot forward. Byron said as much as the other candidates, we have phenomenal teachers, there's teachers in this crowd that I actually had to age myself or them. But, I mean, we have phenomenal folks, so we need to sell what we have in this school, and I think there's a lot of ways we can do that.
I think one of the things to keep in mind, the positives in that is that we do take in more than we lose, it's just starting to decrease. That is a, that means that we're doing something right, and we need to sell that more. Some of the things we've been talking recently with, at our special work sessions with the board is the fact that whole families are moving away, and not just because of bullying or because they want to go to a neighboring school. Whole families are, are moving that have three or four children that go to this school, and dad or mom loses a job, they have to move. That is the economic times that we are going through right now. Hopefully, at a larger level, that gets taken care of and it trickles down into the local level. One of the things that we can definitely work on is daycare. The stats were that as soon as we, we, we had our superintendent look into it, when we shut down our daycare, that's when we started losing a lot of children to neighboring towns because I think Byron even talked about it. It's so important to get those kids into the school right away, and then they stay, and I think we know the town that's doing a very good job at that, and we are talking about doing that next year. We have a room or two available for that in the elementary. One other thing that has been kicked around a little bit is the industrial arts program and growing it. We will need more room, we'll need more equipment, but we can be the place to have that. A lot of schools don't have that anymore, especially in a large scale, that could bring in more kids for that. Thank you.
I see this answer to, or the question about open enrollment has sort of two parts to the answer. One is, how can we get back to people who have already left? That's a little bit hard to do because they've already made their decision. If they've left for another school, there must have been something that attracted them. But I think more importantly, the other part of my answer is going to be, how do we keep people from leaving the school in the future, the ones that we have control over? There's some you don't, you know, somebody's job changes, they need to move to a different part of the state, we're going to lose them, and we can't help that. But I'm reminded of Edward Deming, who helped Japan redo their whole auto manufacturing, and his, he had two main points that were really important to me. I learned this a long time. He said, number one is determine who are your customers, and we're in the business of educating students, in many ways, the parents in this district are our customers. So, you define who your customers are, and then you, you ask them, what is it that you need? Are you happy with what you're getting? There has to be a feedback loop, you know, we can't just be, you know, having information go out to them, we need to be soliciting information from them. And I think if we are talking to parents, to family members, and I think it's easier than ever now with technology, what is it that you want from the school? Is there something that's being, not being provided? You mentioned the industrial arts program. Maybe somebody would highlight that. Maybe somebody brings up something else that none of us have thought about. Well, then we can take a look at that and see if there's some, is this just a one person who wants it, or is it maybe more widespread? Does it really make sense? Should we, should we look at implementing something? Maybe some of the ideas will be fairly easy and, and not very expensive, others might be prohibitive, but at least, I, I think it'd be good if the people in the district knew that the school board is listening to them, wants input from them, and, and values that input.
Thank you, and this might actually be a very question that makes sense with that Les comment. How can board members promote more community buy-in to our school? Mr. Bernard?
Promote more community buy-in. I'm embarrassed to say that the first time I went to this event was a couple years ago, moving back into the area with my career. I did not read about it in the newspaper, I actually heard word of mouth through people that were already coming. The reason that I bring up that example is I realize it's advertised and that information tries to get out for candidates and... Can you repeat that one more time for me?
Question is, how can board members promote more community buy-in to our school?
Okay, so when this is the first time that I went to this event, I didn't feel, as a community member that had lived here for my whole life, that I was very invested with local events. So, with that, the point I'm trying to make is I would like to find a way to bridge, make a connection with the community. I feel that I represent the average community member in Moose Lake, lives here and works here and has a family here and plans to stay in this area, and to really get information out through things like this, but using all the assets that we have, whether it's emails, the local station that we're going to be on right now, the informer, the newspapers that the school puts out, all that is great, but to really, whether it's at conferences or setting up booths to get information out, just something where you can hook families and start educating parents more and more to the school. We talked about that earlier in other questions, and Byron just said, if you define who your customer is, well, in this case, the teachers are our customers. We need to look at some type of creative ways to really educate parents in this area. It's easy to complain about something and take for granted all the good things that we do have going on in the school right now, so maybe all here is for any connections that folks have and the contacts in the area that we could use, again, during conferences or special events to get that information out.
I would think that foremost is being accessible to the public. I think being out in the public and being visible and being approachable and conversational, that is the number one way of getting out into the public. Something that I'm proud of taking part in is going to community things, community groups, going to sporting events, going to things here at the school. It, it's amazing what you can get out there and, and, and start conversations with the public by just talking about the school. The school is an integral part of the community, and the future from here on out is incumbent upon the next school board members to keep that contact with the, with the community members, because there's a lot of things coming up here, a lot of things that, not just spending your hard-earned tax money, but the education of our children, which is the utmost of importance.
Can you repeat the question one more time? How can board members promote more community buy-in to our school?
Okay. In order to have community buy-in, I think people have to feel that their buy-in is welcomed and that they're going to be listened to, that, that they're valued in the community. You know, we, when it comes to communication, I think that's what a lot of this is about. There's two different types of communication, there's push and pull. By push, an example would be the informer. We take information, the school does, and sends it out into the community, pushes it out there, people get it and read it and that sort of thing, and there, and there's also pull where people come and ask for it. I think we could do a better job on, on, well, making people, let them know that if they want information, they can, they can get it, so the pull. For example, when I went to the school's webpage to look at the school board members and stuff, if I remember right, I'm not 100% sure, but it just shows email addresses, there's no phone numbers. I think the phone number should be in there. If we're on the school board and we represent the people in this district, we need to be very available through any means. I don't think the school district is using, is making, taking full advantage of email and texting. You know, a lot of schools, or even, you know, I know my wife would sometimes get messages from the University of Minnesota, they, they, they push the stuff out there, it's going to your, come to your cellphone. That information about school board meetings or, or sporting events, or whatever information that we want to get out there could be just sent, and if people don't like it, they delete it. If they want it, they go, oh, hey, okay, I forgot about that, yeah, I'll put that on my calendar. I don't know that we're, I don't know that the school has a Facebook page, it may have, I haven't, I haven't looked to see if it does. Another one, you know, for corrections, we've got a community advisory board where people are invited to be on it and attend meetings, maybe occasionally with the school board. They sit in and they're just invited and have a chance to say what they want. Obviously, the public is welcome anytime to any school board, but more of an invitation or to be part of it by being on a, on a school advisory board might, might be helpful.
I think the answer to this question is kind of twofold. One, as an individual school board member, I think we need to, like Jamie said, make ourselves accessible. We need to welcome communities' input, and we need to listen and not be judgmental of their decisions, and not based the way we vote on things based on our own opinion, but based on the opinions of our community members. I think the second part of that is that, not just as individual school board members, but as a school board as a whole, I think we need to do the best job we can do. We have different ideas, we have different personalities, we have different interests, but together collectively as a school board, I think we, if we keep in mind, which I think we have, what we need to keep in mind is that we are making decisions based on the best interest of our students, and that, that is number one. And if we all do that, and we have different approaches to it, different ways of getting there, but if we keep that in mind, then I think that's most important, and I think that the community will sense that and, and feel that.
All right, thank you all. We have one final question, that's going to be, we'll start with Mr. Jungers, and it's the shortest question, but it's, you know, in some ways, the most important, so two minutes each for this one, and it's a simple one. Why should people vote for you?
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me here to this forum. I, I wish I would have attended it four years ago. This is very interesting, and from my understanding, the last time they had this, there was only eight people in the audience. Thank you for attending this. Obviously, there is a, a big interest in this next school board election. I pride myself on the passion that I have for this community and this school, being, as we talked about before, second generation, third generation, Jungers here and through this school, I have a lot of passion towards it, and I think a lot of you people know that when you do talk to me. This school board is, is very interesting. It's an interesting assignment. It's not easy at times, sometimes there isn't a consensus that can be built for what we vote on and what we discuss, but there are times that, and there are times that because there isn't a consensus, you just have to make the decision that you think is best. I don't take my decisions lightly. When I do make decisions at the school board, I take into account everything from the administration staff, community members, and the other board members when I do vote on things. It's all about the kids. Every time I go to a school board meeting, I remind myself before I walk in that door that everything you do is about the kids, and that would happen whether or not I didn't have children in this school, but I do have children in this school now, and I, I take pride in our school and our teachers and what they're doing and the progression that we've been having for our, the education of our kids, and I'm proud to take part in that. Thank you.
As far as why you should vote for me, I, my thoughts go back to why I'm running in this, for the school board in the first place. My, the vast majority of my adult life has been committed to education. I became a teacher 28 years ago or thereabout, I worked in the public schools for a couple years, I worked at the federal prison in Duluth, I've been working at the Challenge Carceration Program the last 20 years as a, as a teacher there. I went back to school, got my master's degree, so I feel like I've got a good foundation for being on the school board. I'm not as connected with K-12 education, but I know I can learn it and I'm interested in it. As others have said, the, really the most important thing about being on a school board is providing the best education possible for the, the kids in the district, and that's, that's my only agenda. I don't have a hidden agenda. Yes, I'll talk about the possibility of building a new school, but I wouldn't call that my agenda. It's more a case of, is that the right thing for the kids at this time? It's more a case of, is that the right thing for the kids at this time? The reason I'm running for the school board now versus, say, four years ago or whatever is I'm looking at possible retirement concretions in another year, and I'm going to have some time on my hands, and I'm looking for some things to do that I can commit myself to and feel good about and feel that is time well spent. I kind of like board work. I like problem solving. I like trying to tease through the issues and come up with something that's going to work. I like working on it as part of a team towards a common goal, even when there's a difference on the board, that that just means that maybe you just need to do a little more work and find that, some way where you can compromise and come to something where you can come to consensus. I've been on the sewer board for the past 16 years, the Moose Lake Windermere, Moose Lake Township, Windermere Township, and I've been the chair the last 14, something like that. And it's the same sort of thing as what we find on the school board here. It's budgets, it's problem solving, it's keeping people in the community happy, that sort of thing. And I'll bring those skills to this, to the school board if I'm elected.
I guess, I'm not going to tell you you should. You can if you want to vote for me. But I have eight years almost of experience on the school board, and really what I learned was that it took me the good first year to really get familiar with everything, probably the second year to feel really comfortable with everything that I learned the first year. You know, it's, there's a lot of dynamics on the school board, and things are changing and people are changing, and you really have to learn how to work well with other members. And there's a lot of policies, there's a lot of rules and regulations, all kinds of stuff. So it is a real important commitment and time-consuming, and I've enjoyed my first two terms. I also have a master's degree in education. I've been a substitute teacher in Moose Lake for six years and thoroughly enjoyed it. And that's probably the main reason why I'm running is because I truly have a passion, not just for teaching, but for kids, for kids in general. I just love them. I love every single one of them. They're all different, and some of them are challenging, some of them are easy, but I truly do thoroughly enjoy being around students and kids in general, and I really want the best education that we can give them.
Why you should vote for me if you want to, as Christie said, so. Is everyone, I think, just put out there? I'm personally invested in this community. I went to this school, my folks went to this school, grandparents went to this school. When I think of Moose Lake High School, I'm not thinking about budgets and, you know, just development right away. I'm thinking of memories. I have wonderful memories of this place, and a lot of people put a lot of time in for me, and I want to pay that back. This is an area that I live in, it's an area that I continue to live in. I'm planning on having a family in this area. I want to make sure that this school, and do my part to make sure that this school remains a wonderful school that can afford to run, that can afford to be here, that keeps up with the economic times, that keeps up with technology, and in the end, you can go to bed at night and know that we did the absolute best possible thing for the kids during these years that we were in for this term. With that, with the exponential growth of a place where I work at, MSOP, for the state of Minnesota, a combination of our exponential growth that we dealt with and the challenges that come in, these are challenges where you deal with stakeholders in the community outside the area, all of your licensing and outside regulations and statutes that you need to consider when you make any of these decisions. I think a lot of that is transferable to a decision like this, within your budgets and your statutes and the legal obligations that we have to provide. I don't remember who said it, but someone said, "I don't have an agenda." Ever since I put in for the school board, I get stopped in the grocery store and asked what my agenda is. I guess, I guess I lied, I do have an agenda. My agenda is to do what's 100% the best possible thing for the students and future students of this school, and that's basically it. And in these challenging times with the flood, with recovery and tight budgets, I have some big ideas. I want to look into more referendums. I mean every word of, I want to come in to this school, meet with all the teachers, see what they would like to do, see what they can offer, and see what we can do with referendums and bring more folks in.
All right. I would like to thank all the candidates for their time here today. As was mentioned before, we're having a meet and greet in the media center immediately following this. You can check out the new bookshelves, they're awesome. And can't wait to see you all down there. And I just wanted to say thanks again for everyone who helped organize this, Sarah and Lisa and Jess and everybody else. Thank you. (applause)